Did you see, did you look at it?
Yeah. It's ridiculous.
Okay, what is this? What is that for?
Um, there's a list of equipment.
No, what is this one for? One twenty-eight?
One twenty-five.
I mean, I don't know about that. Yeah, one twenty-five.
Yeah, they have our list for me. I can't tell you off the top of my head. But this is, this is special operations team equipment.
It's, no, but it's for this? The local command unit or what?
No, that's at zero.
Is what?
Doing good.
That's two different, that's two different line items. That's at, the local command is zero.
Oh, oh, okay. I don't like the way this is. All right. We're trying to offer a square.
Five, five o'clock.
Must be turning now.
Before we get into the regular meeting, we're gonna have a public hearing to consider item number one, adoption of ordinance number four-two-five-nine and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance, chapter eighteen, taxation eighteen thirty-seven, inter-rat vendors prohibited. Anyone wishes to speak for it or against? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing, go into the regular meeting. Call to order.
Lord, may your goodness love be present among us today. Bless the city of Gonzales with unity, hope, and vision. We give you thanks for the many gifts you've given us. We ask for your guidance and ask that you build in all of us a deep respect for one another. We especially ask that you watch over and protect our police, officers, firemen, and city workers. And also tonight, please keep in our prayers all veterans past and present. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Let the leaders do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Ms. Terry.
Here.
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 Okay, before we get into our meeting, I just wanna echo what Mr. Boudreaux said. We wanna thank all of our veterans, uh, prior and present. Uh, we want them to know that we respect them, we honor them, and we love them and their families. Uh, do we have any veterans? I know Chief is one for sure. Uh, do we have any veterans, Ms. Connie? We just want you all to know the city of Gonzalez, councilman, mayor, we appreciate you all and thank you for y'all's sacrifice. Uh, thank you, Chief. I always talk about freedoms and, uh, but it was fought for as well. So, thank y'all. And with this being said, that being said, I wanna just honor Ms. Jacey in the back, back there. Uh, Ms. Jacey, if you don't mind, can you come up to the podium? Ms. Jacey, we just want you to know, uh, you have brought value to the city of Gonzalez. Uh, you have done some tremendous work with your tenure here and everything you have done did not go unnoticed. And we just want you to know that we're gonna still be working together and that we love you and we appreciate you and we just thank you. Ms. Jacey is going to be with the chambers, ladies and gentlemen. She has a new job and we're happy for her.
It was a pleasure working for you, working for the ones before you and each of you sitting up here as well. So, thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to serve Gonzalez.
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Jacey. Appreciate it.
Number five, approve the minutes of a regular meeting of the mayor and city council taken on Monday, October twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five.
Make the motion to approve.
House, second.
Yes.
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 Number six, approve the twenty-twenty-six city council meeting schedule.
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
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 Number seven, approve the twenty-twenty-six city holidays and administration days of schedule.
Mayor, before we, so I was looking at it from what our schedule was last year, what the days we gave off. The pre-Thanksgiving and the pre-Christmas Eve and the pre-New Year's Eve, that never was a holiday before. We've gone to a four-day work week and if we do those pre, those two weeks, they would only work two days a week.
Okay.
We've never done, you know, we never given the pre-Thanksgiving, the pre-Christmas Eve, the pre-New Year's Eve off. So, I mean, I was just raising in the administration day, I know that's a flexible day that you have the right to do on that one. But these are the concerns I got with those, we, and I don't think we...
So, there's a city code ordinance. Who did this list? Who did the list, Merrill? Who did this list?
Me and my chief of staff did the list.
Okay.
Uh, and... Yeah. And Ms. Janet, yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, there's a city, there's a city code and it looks like y'all have added like four or five more holidays than the city code states. The city code states New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, Mardi Gras Memorial Day, Independence Day, Juneteenth, which is on a Saturday, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving, which is actually on a Friday, employees are off that day, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and administrative granted holiday, which y'all have chosen to take, um, the day before Mardi Gras. So, y'all have, if that's when they wanna do the administrative day off, that's gonna be the Monday and then Mardi Gras is gonna be on a Tuesday. But like all these other ones on here, um, Independence Day, which is on July fourth, that's a Saturday, that's a no-go, Veterans Day, that's not a holiday, pre-Thanksgiving, pre-Christmas, pre-New Year's Eve, and New Year's Eve, those aren't holidays, not according to our city code ordinance.
That's where we came up with Ms. Terry. Uh, we were short two holidays and we did add two. We were short...
Y'all added like five.
We only had twelve before.
Yeah, we had twelve and we went to fourteen.
So, you just, it's just the pre-Thanksgiving and pre-Christmas, so that's Christmas Eve and thanks, the day before Thanksgiving.
And pre-New Year's Eve.
So, right?
Yeah.
That's what you added?
Correct.
Okay.
But that goes, they only work two days that week, though.
Yeah, that's the problem with a four-day work week.
It's a little flexible, uh...
Well, I mean, I, I, I don't have a problem with the other ones, but the pre-stuff, I mean, and then in the code, we never did give off Veterans Day. I'm just looking at this, what we had, the code. I pulled it...
New Year's Eve been a holiday either.
I'm off of giving holidays off.
Veterans Day is not a holiday.
I think we should, you know, do away with the pre... And go back to just the regular basics, the twelve.
You're welcome to come in and we can discuss it.
I mean, I'll just say what we got in the code, you know? Did y'all look at this?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay, we need to follow the city.
We just compared what we had to last year and then we looked at what some other, what the parish government has and we put it together.
What about, uh, I mean, that's not... That's fifteen, going from twelve to fifteen. And we giving them a four-day work. I'm just trying to say why we didn't stick with what we had.
We definitely wanted to give them, you know, what, what the parish had for sure. We wanted to give them the same days off.
But this isn't the parish, this is the city. We need to follow city code. Kinda tired of saying that, to be honest with you.
I, I'd say we look at this again before we vote on it. I mean, I'm just looking at how many we gave last year and how many we got on for this year.
Well, I just say since we got discrepancy, like, I see it from both sides of the table. I think since we got a code where they talking about it, I think we should put it in the city attorney's hand and look at the ordinance or however and make a decision from there. Then if we need to amend the code or do whatever we need to do then...
I, I think we need to do that, because we need to follow it.
That's perfectly fine. That's fine. Yep.
I think it goes back to legal, let him look at it.
Take a look at it. Um, so, section two dash two-eleven, holidays does specify twelve, uh, regular holidays, but the subsection C says special holidays. It says special holidays claimed by the mayor should not be subject to provision of the subsection B above. But would it consider special holidays?
A special holiday wouldn't be pre-Thanksgiving.
Well, what, what is a special holiday?
You know, I think it could be, anything, it'd be Veterans Day, you know?
We have Veterans Day.
Well, I think a special holiday...
No, we never had Veterans Day.
I think a special holiday might be like when the mayor does an employee luncheon and lets them go home half a day. You add that time, if you do that once a quarter, that's two full days that they get off. Half a day, four times a year, that's two more days.
Well, I think, I think the code needs to define what a special holiday is. I'm guessing what a special holiday is, and that's...
Well, that's, we need to find out. I mean, I guess, I don't, you know, if it's special, Veterans Day would be the only one that would... You know?
The special holiday is defined...
I think we need to look at it and go by, I mean, we're not following our code here lately for some reason. On a lot of things, I, I think we should table this and let Al look at it and go by our ordinance that we got in place.
I agree.
Make a motion.
I mean, I think we need, I make a motion to bring it to legal and we need to follow, make sure we following our code.
Make a motion, Mr. Boudreaux.
I just, I'd like to make a motion...
Yes.
To bring it back, let legal look at it and we need to look at our code, our ordinance code. If we didn't look at it, then make sure we follow everything.
Okay. Just, you got a second?
I'll second.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yeah. We gotta follow the code.
Number eight, approval of a special event permit application submitted by Renee Mattress, Matros?
Matamoros.
Matamoros. On behalf of Conway Development requesting to host a community Christmas market futuring shopping, Santa, kids, activities, music, and food trucks at Village at Conway on Saturday, November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, from nine AM to two PM.
That's it, you said it all right there. We have Santa coming. Working on some of the food trucks, um, in accordance with the law, with the city and everything. Um, we have airbrush, painting, um, music, we have a acoustic musician, and the rest will just be from my speaker, uh, Christmas tunes throughout the day. So, we'd love, oh, we have vendors as well. So, uh, we'd love for the approval. It's been an annual event, uh, for quite some time, so we appreciate everything y'all let us do thus far.
You didn't, you didn't use spokesperson for...
Do I have what?
You didn't use spokesperson for Conway?
I'm this, oh, no, I'm, I just look a little different, but I lost a lot of weight. But no, I've been doing this for quite some years.
Oh, okay.
So, y'all gonna have less than six food trucks?
So, right, right now, we definitely do, but I can definitely stay under that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we require an insurance policy from them or, because it's on their property, no?
I do have one then. I have, uh, one through K and K Insurance for all my events, just because I like to be covered.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Hey, y'all, I have a favor to ask of you. Next year, when you come back, could you try to come more than thirty days away from...
I can definitely do that.
See, it's dated November fourth and your event is the twenty-second.
I can definitely do that.
Y'all do it every year, so...
Yes, we do. I do all these on the side for the developers, so that's why, like, they all kinda just pile up, but I can definitely set a reminder.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine, approval of a special event permit application submitted by Emily Nattas, representing Hometown Vendor Market requesting to host a vendor market at Tango Outlet, providing small businesses an opportunity to showcase their products from ten AM to five PM on Saturday and Sunday, November twenty-second and the twenty-third, and on Saturday and Sunday, December thirteenth and the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Hello, my name is Connie McClamy. I represent, um, Tango Outlet Mall. I'm their liaison as well as Hometown Vendor Market. Um, because Hometown is actually, uh, set up in South Florida, so I kinda, the local. Um, we set up, actually, once a month, we just found out we had to have a permit. We, ours got moved to the twenty-second this past week, we just found out. So, that's the only reason why we're asking so late in the month. So, what would y'all like to know? We have several tents set up. Sometimes we have between forty and fifty tents set up in the parking lot. Um, they, it is insured through Hometown Vendor Market, so I do know that much. So, I don't know if you have any questions or anything?
So, how many food trucks you gonna have?
We don't do food trucks. We don't allow food trucks at our event.
There's gonna be food trucks out there December thirteenth and fourteenth.
But it's not with us...
But not the twenty-third, yeah, that's right.
Right, okay.
It's Tangers food trucks.
Correct.
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Number ten, approval of a special event permit application submitted by Connie Terrence King on behalf of Tank Proof requesting to host their seventh annual Tank Proof Christmas giveaway at Municipal Park on Saturday, December sixth, twenty-twenty-five, from ten AM to one PM.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon to everyone.
Afternoon.
Any questions?
That's the one y'all have at, uh, TJO?
Uh, no, sir, it's at Municipal Park.
That's it, ma'am, yeah. Y'all did that last year?
Yes, sir. We've done it seven years in a row at the same place.
I make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Number eleven, approval of a corporate endeavor agreement between the city of Gonzalez and Ascension Chamber of Commerce for use of the Pace Center in twenty-twenty-six for chamber-hosted events at a discounted rate.
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor, chief, council. Back in March of this year, on March fourteenth, to be specific, I stood before you to request city council approval to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Gonzalez. At that time, our chamber was just shy of about five hundred members, um, and growing quickly. But today, I'm proud to share that we're approaching six hundred members with no end in sight. The partnership between the chamber and the city and the Pace Center has proven to be mutually beneficial in every sense. This CEA has positioned the chamber to host a number of events right here at the Pace Center, events that not only strengthen our business community, but also generate guaranteed, dedicated revenue for Pace and for the city of Gonzalez. Economic value, even with our discounted rates, the Pace Center should anticipate over nineteen thousand dollars in revenue primarily from daytime events. And considering that the Pace Center's total, uh, annual, uh, facility rental budget is north of a hundred and sixty thousand, our partnership alone would account for a little over eleven percent, if not eleven and a half percent of the yearly budget. One thing I wanna make sure that we, uh, make a note of is the Cabela's test. As always, we've ensured that this partnership meets the requirements of Article Seven, Section fourteen of Louisiana Constitution, often referred to as the Cabela's test. The public purpose, the non-gratuitous, and reciprocal benefit. So, as for the public purpose, our events unite economic drivers and local businesses to strengthen Ascension Parish's economy. Non-gratuitous, the city and the Pace Center profit from each event, and none of these are free or unbalanced transactions. The reciprocal benefit, the city and Pace receive measurable value through direct revenue, publicity, and increased foot traffic and ongoing promotion. Together, these efforts keep the Pace Center top of mind as a premier event venue and economic hub. Uh, and this partnership, it's working, and both financially and functionally, it aligns perfectly with the city's goals and the chamber's mission to drive growth, to drive opportunity, and community connection. So, I appreciate for your continued support for the CEA and I ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Donnie, I got one question. The, how many people come for the annual awards banquet? That's about, what, three fifty?
No, it's, it's closer to five hundred. Annual awards is about five, women in business is five fifty. Um, most of our luncheons are between two hundred and two hundred and fifty people.
Yeah, I think this is a good event for us, us put at the city with the chamber. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Okay, on number twelve, uh, we have an address on here and it should just be on Lanue Street and not the physical address.
I'd like to motion to amend that, to remove that address and just add up the word on, remove the address and add on to it.
Yes.
Add what, which one to do? Add?
Add on, that's the same address, it says located on Lanue Street.
Okay, I'll second that.
That's a motion to amend?
Yes.
Make a motion to amend.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Number twelve.
Okay.
Introduction of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance, chapter twenty-two, zoning, section twenty-two dash two, zoning districts, to approve the request of Donald L. Peoples Junior to rezone parcel number two-zero-zero-four-one-three-two-four, located on Lanue Street, Lot Two B, from Zone R eight residential, eight thousand square foot lot size, to Zone R three TH residential townhouse for construction of nine townhouses, residential units.
And you're making the introduction, so you need to motion, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that went through planning, right?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to introduce.
Yes.
Public hearing on the next meeting.
November twenty-fourth is the public hearing. Number thirteen, final vote on ordinance number four-two-five-nine and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance, chapter eighteen, taxation eighteen through thirty-seven, inter-rat vendors prohibited.
I had a couple of questions on that one, mayor. Is the council gonna have final approval? I know it underlines it on this in the ordinance rules, regulations by the city council. And before, it's gotta go through special permit too, right?
To what?
It's gotta go through special permits?
Yes, correct.
The way it reads out, it goes to get approved by fire, correct? It goes, gets the permit?
Correct.
And it comes back to us, even though it gets its permit, if we decide we don't wanna give them the special use permit, we can do that, right? According to this, Allen, did you see this?
Yeah, so, this is...
I believe you had a good... Go ahead. No, I think, I'm not sure if it was, your suggestion, gotta, addresses specifically what Council Boudreaux was talking about.
Yeah, there's, there's two issues. One is a site-specific approval, which, uh, the council still may have some oversight, but then a special event permit would be on a case-by-case basis. Is that correct, what you're referring to?
That, the, the scenario that, that comes from Boudreaux painted, I think is addressed accurately, especially by you and, uh, Council Turner's email.
Yeah, that's correct.
The other part of it is the two phrases for a public purpose, right, and the, uh, the, the special...
Special event, right. Yeah.
So, those were problematic and found to be very difficult to enforce by our permitting department.
Correct.
And we went round and round with Mr. Sam's food truck over this, right? And kinda showed us where some of the glitches were in, in the way it was drafted. So, but as to Council Boudreaux's concern, I think the proposed amendment from Council Turner addresses that.
Also, the, uh, I would like to put in that we control the hours that these food trucks operate too, because we hadn't done that with the parish. I, I was understanding the parish is to come back to us before they let food trucks open to where we could come and regulate the hours in the days. I mean, I don't want that thing open Saturday and Sunday.
Is that...
That wasn't a purpose.
In the regulation, in the, not the ordinance, but the regulations, is the-
But I would like to maybe we put it in here or, you know.
I think we need a separate food truck ordinance is what we need. This policy stuff isn't working out. We need separate food truck ordinance.
That made me a very good idea. Now, the other thing that came up for permitting was tent vendors, people setting up tents, because it addresses itinerant food retailers, right? So the other two that came up were tent, people trying to sell stuff, make it under a tent, and snowball stands, right? That was some of the concerns brought up by our permitting department.
Well, I just want to make sure. I don't want this food truck stuff to get out of hand because it actually initiated us helping the courthouse out. Now, I don't, I really don't think we ever sat down with the parish on the operations and the days. I can remember when we did it last year, but I don't think we set up time specifics.
They were supposed to come back.
Monday, you know, I don't want Saturday and Sunday the food trucks being at the courthouse.
Yeah, that's an issue we have not-
I know, but I'm just saying, bringing up ordinance for food trucks, I think we, I don't have a problem with the way this reads. I just want to make sure going forward that we need to really look at the rules of these things, because I don't want a food truck competing on Saturdays, Fridays, Saturday, and Saturday and Sunday at the courthouse, or anything. And maybe we should underline that in here, in this ordinance here.
I would suggest.
Or-
Councilman Malamud has a right idea. I think you should make it a separate freestanding food truck ordinance. Be a lot easier, a lot less confusing for our permit department to enforce.
Okay.
And all the other ancillary, if they still have issues, if they think merit inclusion in a body of law about snowball holes and tent vendors, that's come up a couple times here in the last couple weeks, so. But if you want to put it all in the email, get it to us, and Alan, we start crafting it.
We'll get. I think we need to make a separate ordinance. I'll, my question's on this, if we'll just set this up like this and then move forward and get a food truck ordinance in place, because that way the police can enforce it. This, this, this is not enforceable, correct, Jeremy?
Well, that's been my problem, because I've called him. He stopped it.
We, the food truck, if we set up an ordinance, you can enforce it, right?
Yes.
Okay, I think we need to-
Because this is hard to enforce right now, because I've called him countless times about a food truck here, a food truck there. He calls somebody, Anthony, somebody from the city. Nobody knows what's going on. And the person says, oh, I have my permit because I own a restaurant. Well, that's not the kind of permit that they have to have to have a food truck, so.
The one that's come up repeatedly is Smith-Sam. And Chief Building official Aiko has shut him down at least three times, Eric says. So, but he comes back up, he was the one operating at the, at the church on forty-four.
Yeah, he legal, yeah.
There's a whole nother set of issues there, because that's a residency zone. When that was in Excentive, the city came in residential, that was never rezoned. Next door to Big Ben, he did rezon his, so he can't operate there because it's a zoning violation, so. No, I would, I would suggest, don't do anything with this. Go back to the old itinerant vendor ordinance as originally read, and Alan will help me out here, and then we can take up specific food truck and other mobile food retailers.
I think we need to do, we need to do a food truck ordinance in, say, hours and days and specific sites, because I see this getting out of hand, and it wasn't intended to be.
No, it's not.
It was intended to help the courthouse, and like I said, the parish should come back with us with specifics. Maybe we need to go to them and give them, them come over here and do specifics. I'm scared it's gonna be a seven-day-a-week at the courthouse having food.
Give me your concerns, right, and I can go have a conversation with the parish. I don't anticipate that being much of a problem.
Well, okay.
And look, they are piggybacking on our, we do all the permitting, right, not just here, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but they asked us to do all the permitting even for food trucks that weren't operating inside the city.
Right, correct.
So whatever your concerns are, get them all on the table, and let's try to craft an ordinance that satisfies everybody.
Should we, should we just table this ordinance?
Well-
You bring it back?
You can table it, or if you bring it up for a vote and you vote no, then it goes back to the original itinerant vendor prohibited. Is that correct?
Either way, yeah.
So-
Yeah, what?
I make a motion to deny.
In that way, we can, we need to get a game plan. I mean. I'd like to, I think we need to get it better than this.
And look, even distances, that's another idea I had. Distances from, I just used the example, Lamondeola, sir, split lunches, rolls, sells hamburgers and french fries. Well, what if the military supply store decides they put a food truck there, and it competes with both of them? I asked Daphne about what would happen if she lost ten to fifteen percent of her food business, and she said she would have to lay off one, maybe two employees. That's when it starts to hurt. It starts to cripple our community, you know?
She's competing.
Food trucks don't-
She's competing in a row already.
Food trucks don't sponsor our ballgames.
We have a stake in this.
No, I know, I know we don't. That's why I want to get it right. That's why I want to get, we need a specific.
Yeah.
I mean, I like what we did to food, the regulations, and like, I think we need to put it all in the, this needs to go in the ordinance. Is it, do we put it under the same one?
Separate.
Yeah, I think, yeah, separate.
Huh?
A separate food truck ordinance.
Separate, yeah.
Because, look, there was nothing wrong with the itinerant vendor ordinance, right? That worked fine, correct?
Yeah.
So that was the original ordinance, and at the parish's request, that's accurate, we tried to accommodate the parish, and no good deed goes unpunished, and this is the unintended consequences. So I think, Alan, I hope, I think I agree with you, go back to the original ordinance and have a separate body of law for food trucks and the other ones, if y'all think-
That's what we could have to do, because if we don't do it that way, we not gonna get it, it's not gonna be fair, number one, and we ain't about to regulate when they open and close. I mean.
Yeah. Share your concerns. Tell us what you want, and we'll try to craft your ordinance.
Because this, this is all, this is new to us. We did it last year. Like I said, we did it in conjunction with, in conjunction with the courthouse, so I think we need to look at it hard. I mean, we got the forty food trucks coming next week, and so I think we just need to look at it. Let's do a separate ordinance for it then.
Okay. So anything anybody wants to see, any issues anybody wants to see addressed in an ordinance, get them all to us, and we'll try to craft one that-
We need to crack it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start working on it.
Okay. Feel free to propose some language.
Do we have, do we have a committee anymore? Ordinance committee? We could go to a committee.
That's ours, man.
That's ours.
I just wanted to put out there, you could look, Alan, you could look at the City of Homa, they have a ordinance on food trucks that they cannot operate within fifteen hundred feet of an established business that sells food. So it'd be like restaurants, things like that. So that, that might be something that you want to look at, that you could maybe copy off of for a distance to keep them away from our brick and mortar restaurants.
Yeah, of course, we want to look at other cities that have done this and have longer success with it, making sure that, you know, what the city is trying to propose not only benefits the City of Gonzalez, but also is consistent with other cities who are doing this as well. So we'll, we'll take a look at those other ordinances in other cities.
Look at some of those down around the terrible parish area.
What'd you say this?
They have a-
Covington and Mandeville? Okay, I think we need to do that and get it, ordinance in place before we go too far.
Yeah, so for this one here, there's a final vote, so the council can bring it up for final vote, either to accept or deny, approve or deny, the itinerant vendor prohibited amendments as it's listed on the agenda.
Okay.
I made a motion to deny.
So we could just deny it. That way, we could go back to the drawing table.
Go back to the original, that's already in the ordinance that really and true wasn't an issue, and then we come back and we propose, or the council proposes, an ordinance for food trucks.
Okay.
Specific for food trucks.
Come back and amend that ordinance we're talking about, right, the itinerant vendor ordinance. Initially, we're gonna have to amend that to go back to the way originally just addressed, door-to-door salesmen, people like that, come back with a separate freestanding ordinance on all these itinerant, retail food, retail, specifically food trucks.
That's what we need to do.
Okay.
I, I think that's gonna be the safest way for us to control it.
Get with it.
If we don't, I just-
No, look, we know we're retail tax, sales tax-driven. We know what we got in our brick and mortar restaurants, right? Hundred percent agree with you there.
We need to help people who need help with this food truck, special fifth, all that, but we don't need them everywhere, then that's what we need to look at, put an ordinance together.
Okay.
Wait, do we know how many applications for food truck vendors we've had within the last year?
There's about, without looking at it on the computer, I want to say we have about two million licensed food truck trucks.
That are currently-
Always in the process.
That are currently operating in the city?
Yes. That are permitted to operate in the city, basically, off the other side of the street.
So what about Tom's Coffee and Teas? Are they permitted? Does that name ring about?
I don't do all the inspections.
Doesn't sound for me. Doesn't sound for me?
Okay, I think, I'll second the deny. That way, we'll go back and you get ordinance in place that, that's really specific, specific on these food trucks, because I, I think we need to do it.
Yeah, well, like I said, share, share your concerns, and we'll try to craft an ordinance that addresses them.
Okay.
Have a motion?
I second. I second it.
I've made the motion to deny.
To deny.
The itinerant vendor ordinance.
Yeah, we can just vote no then.
Yeah.
Okay, now what do you do?
No one changes on this, we'll go make a new ordinance for food trucks.
No for that, and make a new ordinance.
Make a whole-
Or nobody make a motion on the final vote, and it fails. You can do that as well. If no one makes a motion on the final vote to approve this change in the ordinance, then the, it fails. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
If nobody moves to cast a final vote, then it fails.
Okay.
All right.
So we have a motion for, for final vote on the ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance, Chapter eighteen, taxation eighteen dash thirty-seven, itinerant vendor prohibited.
Think clearly, the motion is to deny, correct?
Correct. We have a motion to deny?
I already made a motion to deny.
So we need final vote.
And he's seconded, right?
Okay.
Uh, county woman, Senator James?
Uh-uh. No, we're not married yet.
Uh, to deny, yes.
Um, Councilor Turner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lambert?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
No.
Councilman Boudreaux?
Yes.
Number fourteen, engineering report.
All right, Mayor and Council, good to see everybody. Just a couple of quick updates for you all. So Freeland Jackson, I'm sure you all have been out there to see it, moving along well. We do have metal roofing panels coming in, middle of this month, so that'll be the next phase there, start drying it in. So we have, we have good progress. We're still on track for a February completion date. Kennedy Heights, Councilman, so we are nearing the design period completion, so we are hoping at the end of November, we'll have a complete design package, assuming all is good with that package, then we'll move into bidding and construction, right? So we'd be looking at a beginning of construction at first of the year. Our Lady of Lake Connector Road, we are still on track for a construction completion date in August of next year, which puts the end of our design period at the beginning, at the end of this year, right? So we should be on track there. Some new updates for us, so we've been talking about the master plan for a little bit, so we have had some good negotiations with the vendor that was selected for that, Wagner. We have, you know, contracted with them, barring the next few days, they're, they're putting together the last finishing touches on the contract, and we're looking at those proceed to begin the master plan phase of the twenty-first of November, so that's right around the corner. And the last little bit for everybody, so I'm sure you are aware, there's been a lot of talk about the brown water issues lately in Conway. So we have talked with the vendor that is involved with the city's water master plan. We have contracted with them to start looking at that issue. They are looking at alternatives to propose to the city to address that issue, so that is underway as well.
What did they come, I mean, they haven't come up with any kind of plan?
So they don't have the alternatives yet. They've been authorized to investigate those alternatives, but we're expecting a plan certainly before the end of the year to act upon and hopefully put some, some, some movement there, right? So, but full confidence there that this firm's been involved with your water model for some time. It is Wagner, so they're very familiar with the, the general concept and the issues. Any questions? Otherwise, that completes my report.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, before we adjourn, I got a couple of questions. I know we got a big event coming up at Tanger. I asked the chief, are we gonna have somebody inspected and make sure all these guys got licenses and permits before they start? Everybody, it's gonna be, nobody's gonna be operating in this thing in, in the foodies fest without a permit, a license, correct?
Eighty-one, yeah, we'll be out there. So we'll make sure they have appropriate licensing, permitting, and also material, right? We have, we have it here, so we will verify all of that.
We're gonna have somebody out there during the event, just checking them, making sure they, like, where's Eric, code enforcement? He's gonna be out there?
We'll get him out there. If you feel better having him out there, we'll get him out there.
Okay, and secondly, are we putting out for Jacey's replacement? Because that's a very important role to get Jacey.
Discuss that with Janet. Operations won't change through the end of the year because it'd be impossible to do that. We put it out employee-wide. We are looking to advertise it for the last two weeks of November, and start interviewing, bring people in, interview in December.
Because that needs to be somebody with hotels, I guess, banquet sales and management. Jacey's done us a great job. It's gonna be hard to replace her.
If you would like to, Jacob and I are looking at job description Thursday at three. If you'd like to participate in that, you're welcome to do so.
And that's for the Pace Director?
Yeah, it's for the Director's job with Jacey, you know?
No, agree. The administration takes it very seriously.
Because I sent a couple of emails out, and I didn't get no answer. That's why I was curious.
We're here, Kurt.
No, I sent emails.
Every day.
Mayor.
Come on.
I wasn't on the email, so I'll get to that.
Yeah, every day.
So, we're talking about the Pace Conference Center, the facility rates, why aren't they online anymore? That seemed like kind of a big deal from the audience a year ago.
Never online. Never online?
You didn't tell Miss, one of the ladies out here that it was online, it was gonna be, she asked the price when she was in the meeting. I can tell you who it was, it was Ms. Gloria Bailey. She asked, I was here. And you said the prices are gonna be listed online, so why haven't these prices been listed online, or were they ever listed online? I thought I saw them.
The policies in the city didn't list them online, and they're listed online, surely because there's like ways to get to the price, so you can always see price correctly.
Okay. You said there's a million ways to get to the price?
Like, if you have enough of this, and then it's a weekly day, then that is worth a million.
Okay, I'm gonna suggest and throw this out there, that maybe we make the Pace Conference Center an ordinance, just like we have the Civic Center, because I don't like all this price changing for different people.
You can do that.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
How you doing? Did you go talk to him yet? I know you don't want to do that. You look like you trimmed that, it's on one. Did you go?